Despite what our clock says in the room, and I guess it is 6:31, so we're going to call the meeting to order. If you'd all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the board, at this time, if you would, we will entertain a motion to enter executive session under Maine revised statutes annotated 20A, 405, 6A for personnel issue.
I move that we enter executive session under 1 MRSA 20A 405, 6A for personnel issue.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And with that, unfortunately, we have to ask all of you to step out into the hall.
So we don't keep you all...
Yeah.
So that we don't keep you all in suspense, we're going to look at an adjustment to the agenda. And would you like to make the motion, agenda? Would you like to make your motion?
I move that we move item K2, appointment of administrative staff, principal at Ellsworth High School, to the next item on the agenda.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Members of the board, on behalf of the Ellsworth High School Principal Screening Selection Committee, I would like to present to you a candidate for the Ellsworth High School principal position, who was a unanimous selection of that committee. You've had a chance to meet with that candidate, and I would like to recommend Dan Clifford as next principal of Ellsworth High School.
Can I second? No, I have to move. Okay. I make motion to appoint the recommended candidate, Dan Clifford, for Ellsworth High School principal as recommended by the Ellsworth School Department Principal Search Committee.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Dan, welcome aboard officially, and we're looking forward to you starting tomorrow.
I am motion that we approve minutes from March 10th, 2015, board meeting as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor? Onto item F, communications and correspondence.
We have one letter of resignation of Michael Cunningham at Tech at HCTC.
Item G, other participation, if there's anybody in the audience that has something to bring forward, now would be the time. Okay. Item H, administrators and student board members' reports. Rachel is not here with us today, Rachel Bunker, our student board member representative, so we'll move to the building administrator reports. And Greg, you're up first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll do my last item first because I just quickly had to adjust it. I'd like to welcome Dan Clifford once again as the new principal of VHS. Welcome. Greetings, good evening. Our sports season, spring sports season, excuse me, is underway with track, baseball, and softball practices occurring daily, preseason contests are coming up soon. SAT testing of all juniors will occur tomorrow off-site, and our AP testing will occur off-site during the middle two weeks in May. Preparations are being made for the MEA online junior testing, which will occur the third week in May, and I want to express my many thanks to Amy, Jim, Tim, and all of EEMS, as well as April, Lynn, Shannon, and Rachel for all of their help in leading this. As you know, that testing is occurring at the middle school first, and then it will occur with us later in the year, so I want to thank them publicly for all their help, certainly. The proficiency-based diploma steering committee has now grown to 18 members, including building and district-level administrators, and it meets every Monday afternoon at the high school and the library. Our short-term goal for this year is to have a comprehensive document that outlines our nine through 12 pathways to graduation and plans for its implementation to be aligned with the extension application that everyone is aware of. And I wrote this down, and I may have overstepped a little. Obviously, I think our long-term goal is to have what people are referring to as a pre-kindergarten-through-adult ed document outlining the same. That's down the road further, obviously. People have selected, and preparations are being made for the May 1st Maine DOE meeting at Ellsworth High School, Maine Department of Education, excuse me, to discuss that extension application with us and the associated deadlines with it as we move toward a proficiency-based diploma system. And lastly, preparations are being made for this year's junior-senior prom, which will occur May 9th, the senior banquet on June 3rd, the awards night on June 10th, and of course, graduation on June 12th, and our subsequent project graduation whitewater rafting trip after the graduation ceremonies. And that is all, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, you're up next.
As mentioned, at Ellsworth Middle School, our grade six, seven, and eight students have completed their MEA testing, and currently, our grade five students are taking it this week. I too would like to thank April Clifford and Ginger Stoughton from IT for all their work getting ready, as well as the teachers for getting up to speed. There was only 228 pages worth of manuals they had to read, but they did that, and it went well, and of course, thanking the students for their effort on the test. Teachers spent the March 27th half-day workshop designing their proficiency-based unit, which is centered around at least one common core standard, and they devised a matrix outlining what students need to do to meet that standard, and we'll be sharing that matrix with the students between now and the end of the year as they teach that unit. In co-curricular news, both our jazz band and our show choir received one ratings at the state jazz festivals. They also both received the gold award, which is the highest award you can get, so thank you to Kathy, Tracy, and Will Stevenson for directing the jazz band and the show choir. In one outstanding wrestler, sixth grader Logan St. Peter finished third in the state in the 87-pound weight class. And baseball and softball trials took place last week, teams have been picked and are now underway for baseball and softball. Track now has 77 students involved because we do have fifth graders taking part, two new coaches, one to replace somebody that left, and one new one for the fifth graders. Those coaches are Blake Pattingale and Darren Richardson, who are joining the coaches we have. Rochelle Brown is back as the JV softball coach after a year off. In parent news, we did hold a proficiency-based education meeting on March 25th, only 17 parents showed up. We had several teachers and administrators in attendance, that support was appreciated by me, for sure, and of course, we wanted to explain what proficiency-based education was all about, and then answer some questions, and a lot of it was around this unit that we're going to put forward to the students. And our last day in school for students is Monday, June 22nd. The eighth grade graduation will be Friday night, the 18th, at 6 o'clock. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Amy, who's the rover?
Hello, everybody. Happy spring, finally. Very exciting. I do have some school news. Jim just reported that the middle level was doing their MEA smarter balanced testing, and our fourth and third graders are about to join the journey. We are going to actually begin on April 28th, that's a little different than what I told you all, and we hope to be finished by May 15th. So instead of doing one class at a time, we're going to do two, and we know that April and Ginger will be at our sides to help us as well. The teachers have done an excellent job preparing the kids. A letter is going home this week for parents to just talk about what preparations can be happening at home. Good night rest, stay at school. The schedule will be on there as well, so that people will know when their child will be tested. We had kindergarten registration, we've done three days, and I'm sure there's more to be done. As of today, we have 69 kindergarten students. That's a little bit higher than what our average is this time of year. If people have not registered their children, there's still plenty of time. We'd like to know sooner than later. You can call the school and make an appointment with Mrs. Cox. We won't be having another day. We're very excited, the walking school bus is about to take on its new adventure right after school. We come back to school after vacation, it will start on a Wednesday. We have enough to have two routes, so the first route is the YMCA route, and they will be walking to and from school, and then the other route will start at Hancock Street and come down, down School Street, down State Street, and to EEMS. We have enough volunteers now that we have two volunteers for each day, but we're always looking for more, and so we're pretty excited about it, and as soon as we can get more volunteers and more children to sign up, we will have another route, we hope. Again, the Y is before and after school, but our route is just to school. And last, for the school news, is right after vacation, there's always a letter that comes home for me that talks about the 2015-16 school placement, and people have been asking, when will I be able to say what I want to do, because we have a lot of options. We have the learning community in grades two and three, we have some co-teaching, and so just be looking for that letter to come home. For PTF news, we had a visiting author, Rochelle Burke, she was excellent, March 19th and 20th, we want to thank the PTF for that. It coincided with a spaghetti dinner, it's the first one we've had in a while, and so there wasn't a lot of people there, but it was a really nice time. Teacher appreciation work is the work. Week is the first week in May, and the PTF is planning on doing breakfast, something will be coming home for that. And we had our last movie night, and it was a great, it was the Lorax, and I want to thank the PTF for hosting those throughout the year because it really does bring families together. Any questions? Thank you.
First and foremost, congratulations to Mr. Clifford, I'm very excited to continue working with him. I wanted to report about our first annual middle school camp that we held at HCTC. We were thrilled with the turnout, we had approximately 55 middle schoolers come from 8 to 11 on a Saturday morning, and 13 different middle schools were represented from around the county. So it was wonderful to bring kids together with our high schoolers. Our high schoolers served as mentors, and staff all came in that Saturday morning and ran technical programs that morning for middle-school-age kids where the high schools were, high school students were mentors. So it was a great morning, we're getting lots of requests for when are we doing it again, and our plan is to probably do another one in the fall for families. That following week, we had our first-ever HCTC academic night, which was another huge success. We had a really good week. That was the first time we invited high school teachers from all of our sending high schools to come to HCTC to hear about our work with proficiency-based, and talk a little bit about how we can start working together, cross-connecting industry standards to the academic standards. And we were thrilled with the turnout, we had teachers from Ellsworth High School, Bucksport High School, Sumner High School, Darrell Stonington, and MDI High School. In addition, we had administrators from all over the county come together, and it was a great opportunity for my staff to show one unit, to give one example of how that work might look and be done in a CTE setting. We got great feedback, and we plan to give you more information about that later this year. Another exciting thing at HCTC, I'm starting to see more and more our programs collaborate with one another and try to do some integrated units, and this week, we had our law enforcement program, our staff came together and staged an accident scene in our back parking lot, and the law enforcement students and our CNA students had to be first responders while our media students filmed as news crews to kind of see what that would be like if they were first on the scene. So the more and more our staff does those kinds of things, the more opportunities our kids have, so I really enjoyed watching that come to life. Our annual open house is Thursday night from 6 to 7:30. We have opened it up to our accepted students that are coming in the fall, but we've also, the last couple of years, extended the invitation to 7th through 11th grade, so that if families want to come and see what is in their children's future, they can come see what that might look like, and hear a little bit about how they should set up their academics their freshman year in high school, so that they can attend and make that a little bit easier of a transition. So that is Thursday evening. Finally, I had emailed you also some graphs and charts about fall enrollment, I won't, I'm not going to go over those now, but I'll continue to provide those to you each meeting because they are in flux. I mean, I get them every day, I'm getting another edition. So as that changes, we'll continue to provide you with updated numbers so that you can see what enrollment looks like for the fall. Finally, Skills USA, I'll talk more a little bit about that later in the meeting, but I did want to announce that on April 30th is our next big fundraiser, it's our Skills USA spaghetti dinner, and we're adding a dessert auction to the evening from 5:30 to 7:30, and you can just pay when you come that evening. It should be a great night. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, Dan. Thrilled to see you there. So we're plugging along, we're having a great spring. A couple of highlights, we've launched our first CNA program, and it's a good example of how we're really trying to work together with community organizations. Our CNA class is being taught by Jeanette Gray, who's doing our clinical work, and Nancy Eaton, who is a veteran teacher, and she's teaching that in two locations, at our site in the Learning Center, so I can provide student advising and career advising to the students one day a week and one day a week. She's doing that at the Higher Education Center, so that the students can be on a college campus and see this as the beginning of their work, so. And the exciting, very exciting piece of it is that it's, the clinicals are happening at Seaport, which is a great, beautiful, new facility here in Ellsworth, and provides a great opportunity with state-of-the-art equipment for our CNAs, so we're very excited about all the collaborations connected to that. We, I went to a Maine adult education directors' conference meeting last week, and we are all working together to see how the implications of a new workforce act impact us. The timing for Ellsworth School District is really good because we really need to build real strong, strong partnerships with organizations and in the community to provide really strong career pathways for all of our students, so college and career readiness. And so it's great timing because I'm starting to build those relationships with community leaders. And I was asked to be a part of the strategic planning committee for the Ellsworth School District, so this gives me a great opportunity to really see a perspective of the ground level of the priorities of stakeholders in Ellsworth, so I'm really excited to be part of that. And big news is that we had our first HSET graduate this week. Marilyn Starling, our chief examiner for HSET, and HSET teachers Vanessa Richards and myself both sat around the speakerphone to give the news to Colton Eshte, who was our first HSET graduate. So by the end of the year, he'll be surrounded by a field of others, but this week, he's number one. And last, we have two new volunteers. The volunteers are, have become a real lifeblood to our program in lots of different ways, and Roger Innis and Sarah March, both from MDI are providing, have just started providing really critical supplemental instruction for our ELL, English language learners, because it's really hard for us to provide more than one session a week, and Roger is actually meeting twice a week with one of our students, so, who's a beginning English speaker, so shout-out to volunteers, so. Does anybody have any questions? We're just getting ready to plan our program for 2015-16, and we're actively recruiting teachers and ideas for courses, so spread the word and look on our website how to get more information or give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel is not able to be with us tonight, she has a personal commitment, but she did provide you with a written report. I believe you've all received it.
So we're onto your report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I have a brief report for you this evening. First, it's a report, new staff that have been hired since our last meeting. Mr. Newitt already referenced those two individuals, but Darren Richardson, assistant track and field coach at EEMS, and Blake Pattingale, also an assistant track field coach at EEMS. Did have one resignation to report to you, you saw the letter come around earlier, it's Michael Cunningham at HCTC, one of our Red Tacs. Annie mentioned the mission/vision work, and I'd like to expand upon that a little bit. The mission/vision steering committee did meet, as we reported at the last meeting, in their initial meeting with facilitator Mary Jane McCallman on March 18th. At that meeting, the members reviewed the committee's charge, which is to engage the community in defining a comprehensive, future-focused vision for the Ellsworth School Department that will prepare all of our students for 21st-century learning, work, and life. Included in that process is going to be, by the end of June, a new mission/vision instead of guiding beliefs for the Ellsworth School Department. Committee is scheduled to meet again tomorrow afternoon at 4 o'clock, at which time, they're going to spend a lot of time identifying a variety of stakeholder groups that will be sought out to gather information about what they think about Ellsworth schools, what they'd like to see in the future of Ellsworth schools. So it's certainly going to be a community-focused effort to provide a community-focused vision. I did provide you with a list of the members, but I would like to, for the members in the audience and the members of the public, publicly recognize the folks who are serving on the steering committee. First, we have Brenda Thomas, representing the Ellsworth School Board, Annie Sargent, representing Ellsworth Adult Education, Jim Newitt is administrator representing Ellsworth Middle School, Andrea Beardsley, teaching at Ellsworth High School, Judy Didi, teacher at EEMS, Peter Fariger is representing Downey's family YMCA, Miki Sumter is recommend, excuse me, representing the Economic Development Office in the city, Pam Perkins is the city councillor who is represented, Carl Lusby, I think his category would be retired, I'll leave it at that. Mr. Lusby, I hope you're listening. Amy Phillips, a parent, Chastity Cash was a parent who is also chair of the VPA Boosters Club, and Wyatt Alexander, who is a student from Ellsworth High School. Again, that group is in for a great deal of work between now and the end of June, and it'll be a tremendous product, I'm certain. Mr. Applestein mentioned a May 1 meeting from the Department of Education. This meeting from the Department of Ed will be part of a site visit to support our school system in the ongoing transition to a proficiency-based educational model. And Greg is accurate when he talks about, even though this is focused on a high school diploma, this is certainly a pre-K through adult ed effort. Purpose of the DOE's visit is to provide them with an understanding of our transition to the new model, to view progress made since the submission of the application, and to learn what types of needs the Ellsworth School Department has in terms of resources to help us make a successful transition. The team will provide progress, a progress report on their estimation of our progress, and seek to learn what will be different in the Ellsworth School Department by the end of this June, and also what we plan to do for the next year. And as Greg mentioned, the proficiency-based steering committee, which is a group of 18 people representing not just the high school, but grade levels above, grade levels below, is really driving that work at this point in time. The DOE team is going to meet with high school teachers, high school administration, and the district leadership team, and that's part of the requirement, so we're looking forward to that. You knew you wouldn't get past this meeting without an update on the budget. Building administrators and department directors have completed their presentations to myself and our business manager Carolyn Heller, and a meeting this week with our finance committee, with Brenda and Marsha. Those meetings started today, and there'll be a little more update on those that we'll talk about in just a minute. Now, it's important to know right now that while the state budget, including the final level of general-purpose aid to schools, is still very much in the preliminary stage as the legislature completes its work, but with the preliminary numbers, we are anticipating an increase in the local mill expectation, which is the amount we have to raise to get full state subsidy of approximately $349,000, and a corresponding reduction in state subsidy of approximately $290,000. So a couple of challenges at the outset. Now, the budget will be the focus of your next workshop, which is on Tuesday, April 28th, and we'll get an agenda out to you on that soon. Thursday night, Ellsworth High School will be host to a town hall meeting, it will be hosted by Governor Paula Page. Meeting is expected to run from 6 to 7, and it will be held in the school theater, and I believe the topic of that town hall is Governor Page's budget. I'd like to close my report by, again, expressing congratulations to Dan Clifford on your selection as the next high school principal, look forward to working with you and having you join us in the school department. Would also like to express thanks to the members of the screening selection committee for their work through this process. They did a thorough job of reviewing applications, screening applicants, and in the interview process. And the members of that committee were Ellsworth High School student Justin Brown, parent Jen Alexander, city councillor John Moore, Bev Homich, representing the Ellsworth High School staff, representing the Ellsworth School Department Leadership Team with Greg Applestein and Lynn Maddox, and representing the school board with personnel committee members Dawn Hudson, Marsha Judy. So thank you to all of you for your good work. And that concludes my report, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. The next item is committee reports. All right, we have no old business to cover, so for new business, first item is staff-student presentation of Go Mad for Literacy.
Good evening. We are very excited to have a quick presentation for you. I'd like to introduce my early childhood education teacher Samantha Pangburn, and one of her students, this is Courtney Hall from Sumner Memorial High School. They're going to share a little bit with you about the literacy initiative we spoke to you about this fall, where our early childhood students are working with students at Ellsworth Elementary.
Hello, I'm Samantha. This is Courtney. I'm going to let Courtney do most of the talking, I'm going to torture her a little bit, so it's going to be fun. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that Go Mad is an acronym that the students came up with at the beginning of this program. It stands for Go Out and Make a Difference with Literacy. So my second-year students, who are all seniors, were paired with a fourth grader, she's going to talk to you a little bit about that. And I also want to mention that this time of year is really hard for seniors who are playing sports and are working, so even though Courtney is sick, we were lucky that Martin let her off to come here and do this for you, so she was going to have a lot of peers with her, but they're at a softball game, or they're waiting tables right now, so. Without further ado, this is Courtney. She's a rock star, she's awesome, so you're in good hands.
Hello, it's nice to meet all of you. Before Go Mad started, we all broke up the weeks, and we each made our own plans for our assigned week based around literacy components, like creative writing, research, and poetry. On the first day, we showed up, and we picked our buddies, and we dove right into activities to get to know each other. After we got familiar with our buddies and everyone was comfortable, we started our bookmaking process, which you can see what we kind of have gone over and done. We worked on those books a little bit. We worked on those books a little bit each week. We also created kits, which are bags that have supplies in order to do projects in the books, like colored pencils and glue sticks and scissors and supplies of that nature. A timeline for a session would start with the lead teacher for that week giving their instructions and lessons. And then we would break off into our individual groups, and we would complete the lesson and instructions and do everything. And then we would always close with a sharing circle where everyone is required to share their work and what we did for that day.
And when she says required, she means it. Like, they would make the fourth graders would be like, "No, I don't want to." And they were really good at making.
Yeah, a lot of them, a lot of them don't like to read out loud, but we've tried to get them to come out of their shell a little bit. My peers and I were really nervous at first to work with fourth grade because we're so used to the preschool setting, which is age three to five. So it's a pretty big difference. But we all created bonds with our buddies and learned that lesson planning is basically the same as we were used to in preschool. We just needed to change the curriculum. It was nice to have a change of pace once a week because we go on Wednesdays down to the middle school and work with older kids. The fourth graders loved hanging out with us, and they were able to bond with us in a way they can't with their classroom teacher while improving their literacy at the same time. When we told our buddies this was our last week doing it, their response was a lot of whining, and one little girl even offered to pay us $2 million. We hope this program continues in the future, as it's a great opportunity and experience for both groups. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
This is wonderful.
Yeah.
So there are, you'll notice, some blank pages in the book. And the hope is kind of that when this program is over, the kids will still read and write and journal, and we're kind of, they're really into it, they're really excited about it. So we're kind of hopeful that it will carry out, even though we're not meeting every week.
That's fantastic.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Moving to policy.
On to policy.
Okay, so we have a couple of things to present today. We have, are presenting for second read, the facility's use policy, KF through KE. And I think we've discussed this in our past meetings. I don't know if you have any questions that we need to go over, but we're ready, we're ready to move with this. We have, as a note, this isn't taking effect until September 1.
September 1, that would give us an opportunity to get through the summer and also to be able to notify our regular users of some of the changes to the policy.
I move that we approve the second read and adopt community use of facilities policy, KF, as recommended by the policy committee.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And the next piece also for second read is the community use of the Performing Arts Center.
I recommend that we approve the second read and adopt the community use of the Ellsworth Performing Arts Center policy, KFA, as recommended by the policy committee. I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
So easy, once it gets to this point.
That was rough going first, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Second read also, this is the use of defibrillators in the schools.
I move that we approve the second read and adopt the automated external defibrillator, AEDs, policy, EBCF, as recommended by the policy committee.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
So easy, once it gets to this point.
That was rough going first, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Second read also, this is the use of defibrillators in the schools.
I move that we approve the second read and adopt the automated external defibrillator, AEDs, policy, EBCF, as recommended by the policy committee.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
So next is the discussion and consideration of requests for funds for HCTC Skills USA competition.
Yes, if you remember at your last meeting, you approved conditionally the trip to Skills USA. And Mrs. Bowles is going to bring back some fundraising and expense information to this meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
So we wanted to come back to you now that things are a little more settled and talk about numbers. Who's going, how many, where they're from, and what it's going to cost to get us there. As of right now, we have 18 students. It's actually 20, but two students have their trips fully paid for. Our student who is a state officer is paid for by Skills State USA. And Joe Wright, who won the Courtesy Corps, his trip is fully paid for also by Skills USA because he goes to the event, competes, and works while he's there. So we actually have 20, but we have to fundraise for 18 students. And I have the breakdown of where the students are from. And then we have six teachers who are the students' coaches. What I've outlined for you is the cost of the trip, and the grand total to go on this trip is $38,385. We made the decision to charter a CR bus. Louisville is closer than Kansas City, so it is a little more manageable to go on the bus. This bus gives us two bus drivers. It gives us capability and not have to pay for the shipping of our projects because we have several very large projects that typically we spend a few thousand dollars on to ship to and from the competition. This will allow us to put those on the bus with us. And it also has provided the opportunity, we have put a request out to other schools to see if they'd like to share the cost of the bus. And we have a lead that possibly one other technical school may join us on the bus, and we're awaiting confirmation on that. It will also give us the bus the week that we're there. The state always provides two school buses to drive people to and from the convention center where the competitions are every day. But if you want to do anything above and beyond the convention center, you're on your own. So in the past, we've rented multiple vehicles. With 22, 24 people, we would have to rent many vehicles. So the charter bus will enable us to take care of that expense as well. The meals listed is a stipend per day that kids are given for their meals, same with staff. It does cost $200 per person to register for the national competition. You have to register the kids as competitors and the staff as coaches. So that total is $5,200. And then we need the hotel from Sunday night all the way through Friday night, and they would leave first thing Saturday morning. So the hotel expense is $10,440. When you divide that up by 24, that brings us to our 159938. And to give you a little history, about three years ago, the RSU decided that they were going to pay the registration fees. They felt that the national competition was an integral part of CTE curriculum, and they passed for the first time since I had been at HCTC to pay for the registration costs for that national competition. So, and they paid it for all students, no matter what school they came from. The year after, sending high schools began paying for their own student's registration fee. And so the RSU paid for Sumner and Ellsworth registration fee. RSU 25 paid for Buck Sport. Sumner paid for Sumner students. Last year, the RSU also decided that because staff was giving up a week of their summer vacation, or last year it ended up being maybe four days, and one day was a teacher workshop day, that they should have part of their trip paid for. And last year, the RSU paid the registration fees and paid for their meals during that trip. But it's always been left to the kids and to the staff to fundraise for not only the student trips, but also for the teacher trips. So Mr. Higgins and I had a couple of different conversations about this. And tonight, we're looking for two things. And of course, this is at your discretion. We're requesting for the Ellsworth School Board to pay for the Ellsworth High School student registration fees. The other sending high schools, communities have given money toward registration fees. Some have also given money towards their children's trips as well. And we're requesting for the Ellsworth School Board to pay for the staff trips. It gets to be a lot when staff is fundraising for this many students to go on the trip, and they're also trying to fundraise for their own trip. And in my opinion, I want to send kids with their teachers and their coaches, so we put kids in the best position to compete at Nationals. There's so much scholarship money and opportunity available for kids. I really have felt the last few years, and staff can attest to it, that I really try to sway them to go with their students because I just think that it's important. And without questions asked, they go every year and support their students and coach them. So we do have, looking at my school center budget, I can appropriate this money towards these things and/or using the entire school department budget, we can find the money to do that. Questions from the board?
Can you clarify, you were saying that in your, in your budget, you've looked and there's, there are funds that you can use, you can reallocate funds.
Yep, there's, I have my, I'm my own cost center within the Ellsworth School Department budget. And I have gone through and looked to see how we could pull money into different lines so that we could come up with the majority of this, yes. This is one of those things, Mr. Higgins may want to help me explain, this is one of those things that we don't budget for because you just don't know.
How many kids are in there?
Year to year. I mean, we could have three kids one year, and we could have 20 the next.
You know, you're typically going to have some students who are very successful in this competition, and you're likely to have some that advance to the Nationals, but you can't budget for it. So I think the request is very fair. Certainly have spoken with Mrs. Bowles. In terms of the student registration, that's been in place for a number of years. In terms of the staff trips, Mrs. Bowles does have some money in the HCTC budget. There are some funds in our budget. I guess I'd ask a question. We certainly want to have our staff members support the students there. Is there a requirement?
No. It's not a requirement that they be there.
But we need their supervision.
Some schools, we need the supervision for this many kids. But typically, for some schools, they send the skills advisor, or some schools send the coach and not the advisor. I haven't seen, since I've been here, a school ever send this many from anywhere in the state. This is certainly breaking the mold, sending this many. But we learned very quickly, when I came onto HCTC and went to Nationals my first year, these competitions are so high stakes. There are coaches' meetings for coaches to go to. They go over the rules, the regulations, they run through everything. And there's so many different meetings at different times. When you're taking this many kids, to have those meetings all be covered, to be fair to kids, I think you have to have the coaches there.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I don't think that if our teachers and our coaches are willing to go with their students to support them in this, I think that we should absolutely cover the costs and not have them fundraising. I think it's fantastic you have that many who are willing to go. And the amount of support that it provides our students with the, you know, person they're familiar with, I think that it sets them up for the best chance of success. I think it's a fantastic idea.
You know, what I would recommend, I would support it as well. I would recommend that the motion be to cover the cost of registration and the cost of staff trips pending verification of identification of funds in the budget. Again, I don't think that will be a problem at all.
I move that we approve the request for funds, the HCTC Skills USA competition, as recommended by the superintendent.
I second that.
Should be fine funds.
Pending identification of funds.
Okay. Brenda and Paul, thank you. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
Amy, congratulations on having so many students qualified.
Absolutely. That's fantastic. Okay. The next item is a discussion and consideration of the superintendent of school contract. Are we going into executive session?
Only if you need to.
Yeah.
And that, that is on there in the event that you need to. If you don't need to, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So, do you have a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the, I don't, the school contract. Is it for?
It's a doc. Is there a, do you need to?
Oh, I don't have that. Okay. I make a motion to amend the superintendent of schools' contract to a four-year term commencing July 1, 2015, to authorize the board chair to execute the amended contract, setting forth the terms and conditions of employment on behalf of the board.
Beautiful.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's skip over six for now. Move to the calendar announcements. Meeting schedule, the policy committee meeting will be Monday, April 27, at the Ellsworth School Department offices at 8:30 in the morning. And our next school-born meeting will be Tuesday, May 12, at City Hall Council Chambers at 6:30.
And the budget meeting.
Board workshop on Tuesday, March, excuse me, Tuesday, April 28, at the school department offices at 6:30. Where the focus will be budget.
It is definitely the 28th because in your, okay, it's definitely.
It's the 28th, yes. Tuesday, the 28th. Finance committee had that discussion earlier today. We debated whether it was the 27th or the 28th.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go into executive session?
Okay.
Thank you all so much for coming tonight. Oh, we appreciate the support and seeing all of your beautiful faces in the audience.
For those who are interested, however, after the board's executive session, they will, the board will be coming back into session to take action on this item, if you choose to stay. You're not required.
I move that the board ratify the collective bargaining agreement as presented between the Ellsworth School Board and the Ellsworth Support Professionals Association slash MEA.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned?
Meeting, yes.
Well, the meeting hasn't adjourned, but you, we'll be doing that shortly.
How's this? Having no, having no further business. I move that we adjourn the board meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you all for your, your service.
Yes, thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
Good night.
So we are officially adjourned at 7:49.
All in favor?